Good afternoon and welcome to City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 7. My apologies to those in the gallery. Our previous meeting went longer than expected, so my apologies. First off, we'll start off with a roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor Higgin. Councillor Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Carlson?
Present.
Councillor Croson?
Present.
Councillor Dodick?
Present.
Councillor Middleton Hope?
Present.
Councillor Palladino?
Present.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Here.
Mayor Parker? Mayor Higgin?
Present. Thank you. A City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Next, we'll go on to our kudos and our bouquets, and I'll start to my far right with Councillor Middleton Hope.
None today, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Belinda Croson?
Tomorrow, of course, is International Women's Day, and six amazing Southern Alberta women will be honored at the Women of Distinction Award done by the YWCA. So that will include Mary Anne Crowe Healy for Arts, Culture, and Heritage, Sandra Assi Check for Entrepreneurship and Innovation, Bridgette Murns for Leadership and Management, Michelle Day, Community Leadership and Enhancement, Trina Tello for Truth and Reconciliation, and Brenna Scott for the Young Woman of Promise. So hopefully tomorrow, anybody who's going to the YWCA event will be able to honor these six amazing women from Southern Alberta. So kudos to all of them.
Thank you, Councillor Croson. Councillor Palladino?
I have nothing.
Deputy Mayor Parker?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Raeco Dodick? Councillor Campbell?
Oh, thank you. And probably you may be talking about this as well, Mr. Mayor, but just wanted to acknowledge the press conference that was held on Friday, reminding people of Green Shirt Day. The Boulets were here to remind us it's the fifth annual Green Shirt Day, which is coming up on April the 7th. And what was really inspiring to me was there was a number of people who had received organ donations and spoke. In particular, there was a gal named Margaret who was born with cystic fibrosis, and, you know, at that time, your life sentence, basically, your life expectancy was about 16 years old. But she's well into her 40s and 50s, I believe, right now, and she had a double lung transplant later on. She also had a liver transplant, and she is participating in the World Transplant Games. So it was quite amazing to see that. So just a reminder, write down April the 7th on your calendars and remember the Logan Boulet effect, and it certainly has had a major impact on the country, maybe even the world, but certainly here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Councillor Croson beat me to the punch on International Women's Day, which is tomorrow. So congratulations to all the women of distinction being honored this year, but also to all the women of distinction in my life and around this table. Appreciate all of you very much. Also, members of council, I had the honor to represent council at the Lethbridge Plays Play Summit last week. I know that we signed on to the play charter, I think, five years ago now. The group did take a hiatus, a bit of a hiatus because of COVID, but they're back and in full action. They're going to be coming to council to keep pushing us to do better for our community, to ensure that we have opportunities for structured and unstructured play in our community. I got to see the keynote speech by Dr. Robin Gibb from the university. Dr. Gibb is always very, very motivating and educational, so I appreciate that. But just a big shout out to Lethbridge Plays for the Play Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. National Women's Day has been covered, and I appreciate you too, Councillor Carlson. So nothing, nothing, nothing from me.
All right. With that, first, I'll start off and thank Logan Boulet. That was a great event to be able to attend, as well as International Women's Day. Everyone has spoke to those, so I won't go on too much more. But I did want to also give a huge shout out to Deputy Mayor Parker, who's turned another birthday. So happy birthday, Deputy Mayor Parker, today. All right. Did he bring cake?
(Laughter).
Yeah. This past Friday, I had the opportunity to participate in the 14th Frankel Burton Flag Raising here at City Hall. This event is always a highlight as we come together to celebrate the richness and, of course, the diversity of a vibrant and growing Alberta Francophone community. Over 1,000, that's right, 1,000 Francophone students and staff attended the event, and it was quite remarkable to see the celebration of their cultural and culture and heritage here in Lethbridge. One of the students in particular, we were up and we were talking about, you know, this particular week that is on, and before raising the flag, and had the opportunity to listen to a few students, and they all did an incredible job speaking to this event. And one in particular, I had the opportunity to chat with after, and her name is Nada, and she's here today, and I wanted to have her here today to speak to council about the launch of, and she's probably going to correct me, the Moi de la Francophonie. So I'm, yeah, I probably said that wrong. So Nada's in grade 5 at Agnes Davidson School, and if, and if not, if you don't mind coming up to the mic there, we might have to lower it down just a wee bit, and if you can go through what you went through with us on Fridays. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nabakazi, and I'm going to grade 5 at Agnes, Ecall Agnes Davidson School. It's an honor to be here, and thank you, Mr. Mayor Blaine Higgins, for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to talk in front of our honorable members of City Council. This is a big step for my dream to become a leader. Today, I'm giving the same speech which I had given at the Frankel Burton Flag Raising Ceremony on March 3rd in front of City Hall. Bonjour à tous, je m'appelle Nabakazi. Aujourd'hui, nous nous réunissons pour lever le trapeau Frankel Burton en honore de la richesse diversité linguistique et culturelle de notre province. En tant que notre nation valorise le multiculturalisme, nous reconnaissons l'importance de préserver et de promouvoir la langue et la culture françaises qui ont joué un rôle essentiel dans la façon mode de l'histoire et de d'identité de notre nation. Pour beaucoup d'entre nous, la langue française a joué un rôle essentiel dans la façon mode de l'histoire et d'identité de notre nation. La langue française a été une porte d'entrée vers de nouvelles opportunités et expériences. Ça l'a permis de créer des liens avec des personnes d'horizons différents et créer des liens et de créer des choses qui sont très nouvelles. Ça nous donne un sentiment d'identité et d'appartenance à un monde qui est souvent divisé par la langue et la culture. Mais le trapeau Frankel Burton est plus qu'un simple symbole de la langue française. C'est un symbole de notre engagement commun à construire un monde plus inclusive et plus équitable. C'est un rappel que malgré nos différences, nous faisons partie d'une communauté mondiale plus large qui valorise la diversité, la tolérance, et le respect mutuel. We recognize the important role that the French language plays in our country's bilingual character and its status as an official language. It is through the preservation and promotion of the French language that we continue to build bridges between different communities. The Frankel Burton flag that we raise today represents more than just a language or a culture. It's a symbol of our province's commitment to promoting diversity and inclusivity in our society. It is a testament to our shared values of respect, understanding, and cooperation, which is the foundation of our Canadian identity. So let us raise the Frankel Burton flag with pride and with hope for the future, and celebrate the diversity that unites us and the language that connects us. Let us continue to work together to build a more equitable world for generations to come. Thank you, and vive la Francophonie!
Thank you so much, Nada. (Applause). Well done. And you can see why I wanted to make sure that she came in and spoke here in council. It was amazing to hear her speak there, and, you know, to have this as a second language, and attending Agnes Davidson School, so in French marriage. So once again, thank you very much for bringing that on this special day here to council. All right. I have a resolution, and you know what? You don't have to hang around here because sometimes, I would say, it may not be the most exciting stuff, but you're welcome to. It's public, so.
(Inaudible).
She, he asked, Councillor Carlson asks if he can go with you, too. He can leave. (Laughter). All right. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel. Adoption of agenda be resolved at the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on March 7, 2023 be adopted as presented. And City Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Higgin. There are two additions to today's agenda. They are for closed session, Section 14, so 14.3, HR matter, closed verbal, and 14.4, intergovernmental matter update, closed verbal. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor?
I'll call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Gary, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, moved by Deputy Mayor Parker. Be it resolved at the minutes the following meeting of City Council be approved, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City Council meeting, February 21, 2023, and further be resolved that City Council receive the information, the status of directed resolutions for March 7, 2023, with the following amendments: that council defer the date of return of the Toxic E-Waste Eco-Drop Off Pilot Program to the December 12, 2023 City Council meeting through the Civic Work Standing Policy Committee from May 2023; and that council defer the date of return for the budget appropriations, unexpended processes, and procedures by the May 30, 2023 City Council meeting through the May 17, 2023 Economic Standing Policy Committee from Q1, 2023; and that council defer the date of return of the sponsorship opportunity item to the May 2, 2023 City Council meeting through the April 19, 2023 Economic Standing Policy Committee from the end of Q1, 2023; and further be resolved that City Council receive the information of the procurement summary report 2023; and further be resolved that City Council approve the recommendation contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports, 4.4.1, Bylaw 6393, Increase of Parking Fines, Amendments to the Traffic Bylaw, be resolved that City Council refer this item to administration to work with the downtown businesses improvement area and the Heart of the City Committee in their engagement with the members presenting options on parking; and further be resolved that the results of the engagement be forwarded to the Economic Standing Policy Committee by the end of Q3, 2023. Status Report on KPMG Recommendations for Economic Development Lethbridge, be resolved that City Council set the Status Report on KPMG Recommendations for Economic Development Lethbridge, 4.4.3, Buffalo Treaty, whereas the City of Lethbridge neighbors the largest reserve in Canada, being Kynai Blood Tribe, which is part of the Blackfoot Confederacy, Sixakitapi, and whereas the Buffalo Treaty is supported by not only the Blackfoot Confederacy, but also nations of Treaty VII and other nations across North America. And whereas the City of Lethbridge signed a memorandum of respect and understanding with Kynai Blood Tribe, and whereas signing the Buffalo Treaty symbolizes an opportunity to share knowledge and learn from one another in the spirit of reconciliation, and whereas City Council has identified as part of their action plan an intentional work towards indigenous relations, and therefore be resolved that City Council approve a signatory to the Buffalo Treaty and authorize the mayor to sign the Buffalo Treaty on March 8, 2023, at the University of Lethbridge. And 4.4.4, Voices of Youth Mental Wellness Community Forum, be resolved that City Council provide up to $1,500 of in-kind contributions funded from council contingencies for the Voice of Youth Mental Wellness Community Forum. 4.4.5, Heritage Master Management Plan finalized draft, be resolved that City Council adopt the updated 2023 City of Lethbridge Heritage Management Plan as an attachment to in replacement of the 2007 City of Lethbridge Heritage Management Plan. 4.4.6, Culture Link Report, be resolved that City Council request that the Board of Directors of the Gault Museum and Archives to bring forward options and costs associated with the development of a transportation system between the Gault Museum and Fort Whoop up to a Cultural and Social Standing Policy Committee meeting by the end of Q4, 2023. Wow, that was a long one today. I do have some questions. Councillor Dodick?
Yeah, excuse me. I do have a question on item 4.4.3 on the agenda, the Buffalo Treaty. The question is in the package, although I don't take issue with the resolution. I think it would be important that at some point we upload to the website a copy of the treaty. The treaty has been distributed to council, and I've had a look at it, and I assume this is, the document that I'm holding is the treaty. So I just want to make sure that, at least at some point in time, we do upload the treaty so we know what we're authorizing the mayor to sign, apparently, tomorrow.
All right. All right. That's good. We've had, it's okay to update that. Thank you. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. I had another question, but just as an addendum to Councillor Dodick's comment or question about the treaty, and thank you. I think that should be uploaded. Under the treaty, the City of Lethbridge cannot be an actual partner or a signatory. We can only be a supporter. So I thought it might be important to make that clear, that we are just a supporter of the actual, all the actual members of the treaty or signatories are actual nations, I believe. And we're, so we're just a supporter rather than a signatory. I did have a question on 4.4.1, if I can. Refer to the downtown business, I can't remember what we call it there.
Traffic by, uh, increase of parking fines.
Improvement area, or whatever we call it. We always refer, yeah, the downtown business improvement area. We always refer to our downtown business improvement area, the organization, as the BRZ. So would that, would it not make more sense to refer the work to the downtown BRZ rather than the area? I didn't catch that in our.
I understand, and if anybody wants to jump in, that that name changed with legislation just a few years ago. Anybody?
To Downtown Business Improvement Area?
Yes.
Oh, that's what they're now called?
Through the legislation, I believe, through the Act. Yeah. Solicitors.
All right, the new legal name. All right.
Thank you.
We can put a little dot BRZ above that for you, Councillor Carlson. You good with that? Yep.
All right, hop in there. So although the legislation changed, and so it's formerly considered business improvement areas, the organization's name is still BRZ. So if you're talking to the formal area, you have it correct in the resolution. If you're talking about the organization, they are still referred to as the Business Revitalization Zone.
And that was my assumption, that we're not talking to the geographic area, we're talking to the BRZ.
Because we do have Heart of the City in there, too, which is a group, so you're probably right, in that BRZ. Yeah, we can change that.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, Councillor Middleton Hope?
Good, and thank you, worship. Just in regards to 4.4.3, that typographical error, memorandum of respect. Yep, done. Thanks.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. Just in looking at the procurement summary, I see we've got a number of direct awards in there. I'm just wondering if somebody can tell me how we determine direct awards, and then also, who can I direct someone to if they were interested in one of those direct awards, and who can they talk to about possibly getting on that list, or how that all works?
I will look to Mr. Casker to come up and speak to that if you can.
For the question, so in regards to direct awards specifically, there's a couple ways that one can be awarded. Typically, we think of things in covered procurements, and then there are items that are not covered. And the covered procurement specifically refer to items that are, in general, in excess of $75,000. And those have specific requirements that we need to make sure that we adhere to. In other instances, where things fall below those thresholds, the organization will take a look on a case-by-case basis and make those recommendations. So, for example, the City of Erdre, there's notable exemptions within trade agreements for non-application of those agreements specifically. The electric operations listening tour specifically is some legacy work that has been conducted throughout the organization, and as such, I believe, they needed to reengage with this proponent to perform those services. And the Winged Whale was a proposal that was put forward from Winged Whale to City of Lethbridge, at which case, there's a couple ways that they could typically handle that. But generally, they'll take a look and make a business recommendation based on the proposal put forward. For individuals who are looking to actually engage with the city, there's a couple ways. The easiest is probably to sign up on our website. There's a link there where people can go in and essentially let them, let us, that they're looking to engage with us. Alternatively, for more formal instances, of course, they can always go to bidsandtenders.ca, and they're able to actually sign up there as well. However, that will be strictly relegated to competitive or those covered kind of procurements.
Is it possible for me to direct someone towards you, then, who was interested in one of the proposals that didn't have an opportunity to submit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right, any further questions? Seeing none. Deputy Mayor Parker?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the questions from my colleagues. We, as an agenda committee, felt that this was appropriate to have these items in the consensus, consent agenda. But at any time, if a member of council does want something removed and voted on separately, feel free to. You can probably see there's a few committee submissions below that we felt that would be separated, be better off be voted on separately. But if members of council are fine with everything as a group here, I would ask, call the question.
All right. I see no questions. So question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? Gary, thank you. Moving along, we have no presentations today, but we do have a official business motion.
Okay, so that's the original. And then they added this line. So this is the revised now.
All right. Now, you do have 6.1. There is a slight revision at the very end of it to take effect at the organizational.
He's not here yet.
Oh, oh, sorry. I didn't look over. He's not here.
(Inaudible).
Oh, sorry.
(Inaudible).
All right. I could, I could read through it, and by that time, he will probably be here. All right. Or we can, we can hop to 8 and, and come back. 8.1, boards, commissions, committees?
Hmm, that's the assistance, 8.1.
Governance Standing, CC 56. Okay. Actually, we'll put this one off. It's okay with colleagues till Councillor Middleton Hope returns, and we'll move down to 8.1.1. Fee assistance program policy, CC 56 rescindment, be resolved the City Council rescind, City Council, or City Council policy, CC 56, fee assistance policy, and further be resolved that Council direct administration to combine the funds of the 2023 to 2026 operating budget designated for recreation services, $90,000 annually, and the funds for low-income transit support, C dash 7.1, $200,000 annually, so that both funds could be used for either purpose. And so with that, we'll open it up to questions. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. And I guess questions to the city manager designate. This runs 2023 to 2026. Do we have enough funds allotted for those four years?
At this time, we believe so, yes. And if service uptake exceeds the funding, we will bring that back to council.
So just to sort of preempt that coming back to council too late, is it possible for us to get an update on how the combined program is doing after a year of implementation?
The funding sources are not combined at this time. This resolution is requesting that the original $90,000 for the recreational and cultural services and the additional $200,000 annually for the transportation services be put into one funding pot moving forward. So I can't speak to any integration of the funding at this time.
But after it's being funded, could we have it included that we get an update?
Absolutely.
A question I would have is, we just heard in the provincial budget. A question I would have is, is we just heard in the, in the provincial budget, they were expanding the low-income transit support that was in Calgary and in Edmonton, expanding it to other areas. It, administration through city manager, or somebody could answer that? Because there's, there may be potential dollars coming in provincially, which would, you know, help support this $200,000. It's actually, council came forward and actually hopped to this quicker than what the province did and put this $200,000, but it looks like there's some funding that could be coming from the province. What would happen at that point? Mr. Matthews, or?
Through to Mayor Higgins. So, yes, right now, so right now, there is a recent budget talked about new funding. They would be doing a pilot in Edmonton and Calgary. They're looking at other municipalities that have low fare, or, or low-income fare components. One of the things that has came through just recently to, I believe, was a governance SPC, if I remember right, or one of the SPCs anyways, I can't remember which SPC in here in February, was actually the administrative policy. So I think one of the first things we need to do to be active in this is actually have that policy where it's a true low, low-income transit component. The funding that council put in place back in November is for that purpose, and that's what this resolution is directing towards. So there's some administrative pieces that have gone into place to be able to gain access to that funding.
Thank you. So if it comes in, then, then there could, this funding could be returned to reserve or replaced? That would be council resolution in the future, possibly?
My understanding on this, and specifics are still haven't been provided to the municipalities that I'm aware of yet on this program. So I think we would still need the funding inside of here, because we have to be providing a low-income subsidy amount to be able to get that. However, that'll come in in the next number of weeks. What the provincial budget has said is that they will reach out to municipalities at that time.
Cross that bridge when we get there, or when we build it. Right, sorry. All right, on that, I'll turn that over to Counsel Carlson, open debate. Oh, sorry, Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel, you have another question?
So just to follow up on Mayor Higgins' question, so I completely understand here that if we combine these two and rescind this motion, we could lose out on that provincial funding.
Through to the mayor, through to Counsel Schmidt Rempel, I think it's the other way around. We need to have the funding in place and the program in place for a low-income transit component to be able to get the funding from the province. So I think, here again, once we know the more particulars, we'll answer it more fully, but my understanding from what I see in the budget, we have to have that in place.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Carlson, open debate.
Mayor Higgins, so when we passed the budget initiative in November last year, it actually made this policy not in compliance, because we had added the transit portion to it. And so governance reviewed and spoke with administration and decided to accept the recommendation to rescind this policy and replace it with an administrative policy. We will be receiving reports on the efficacy of the program throughout, so that will be coming back to us. It's one of the things we talked about with administration at the SPC, is that we do expect to and will be receiving reports. We also, when we expanded it to transit, we put $200,000 into transit, and currently, there's $90,000 per year for the fee assistance program. The idea was to combine the two amounts, making sure we still have a transit screen, transit service, and the fee assistance service for recreation and culture. But knowing that the two are actually complementary, that people need to be able to get to the facilities to be able to use the rec and culture, so they'll need transit to get there quite often, and then they'll need to have money as well to get to the, to pay for the recreation and culture facilities. So that's why we suggested combining the two, because we don't really know which part of that the public will be more, finding more useful, whether they'll need the transit services, whether they'll need the rec and culture part of it, whether they'll need both, because we have changes now in the program. So that's why we're recommending combining the two as they go hand in hand. So that's what you see before us. Governance did spend a great deal of time questioning Ms. Mots and administration on this, and this is our recommendation.
Thank you, Counsel Carlson. Are there any, anyone else in debate? Seeing not. Do I take it as your opening and closing, or did you have a close?
My close will just be to call the question.
All right, question has been called, all in favor, opposed, it's unanimous, thank you. And we're going to hop back to 6.1, OBM, term limitations and stipends for council members on boards, commissions, and committees. Whereas city council uses boards, commissions, and committees, BCCs, to seek advice on council on various items of public interest, and whereas city council members are appointed to various BCCs, either constructed by city council or through authorities in various legislation, and whereas city council members serve a four-year term on city council, and whereas the appointment of public members to councils' BCCs have term limitations on membership unless otherwise stipulated by council or legislation, and whereas for members of city council to acquire a well-rounded understanding of the operations of the several BCCs, it is important that members serve on numerous BCCs during their term in office, and whereas members of city council are adequately compensated as a municipal councillor, and while a member of council may sit on a council BCC or external board or committee, they do so as city council representatives and not as a public member. Therefore, be resolved that council, number one, direct administration prepare the required amendments to the bylaws or terms of reference for the following BCCs. First, A, Lethbridge Police Commission, B, Joint Committee of City of Lethbridge and Lethbridge School Boards, so as to establish overlapping timelines for city council members to serve for a maximum three-year term and a maximum of two council representatives at any time, and return to council by July 31, 2023 through the Governance Standing Policy Committee, and limit terms, number two, limit terms for members of city council to serve on the following external BCCs for a maximum three-year term and a maximum of two council representatives at any time on, A, Green Acres Foundation, B, Highway 3 Twinning Development Association, and C, Lethbridge Housing Authority, and three, decline the receipt of compensation honoraria for the duties on council BCCs as well as any other external BCCs they are appointed to as a member of council, and direct administration prepare amendments to Bylaw 6125 Code of Conduct Bylaw to preclude members of city council from receiving additional compensation for their roles on various council and external BCCs. And one thing that was added to the end, to take effect at the organizational meeting of city council on October 31, 2023. And open it up for questions, Counsel Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not really a question. I was going to make a referral motion on this, so if there's questions, I'll wait.
All right, Counsel Carlson.
Thank you, I do have a few questions. First one is to the mover. When you are looking at compensation and stipends, are you also referring to money that a member of council may get through the committee they're on to attend conferences and training? Is that also something you are looking at when you're talking about compensation stipends?
No.
So that would not be included? To the city manager or designate, what is the current process for how we are chosen to be on boards, commissions, and committees? Likely the city clerk's office will have the best answer for this.
Thank you, Counsel Carlson. Do you mean members of council?
Yeah, how, how are members of council at this time? How is it determined which boards, commissions, and committees we would be attending?
So the preference sheets go out to members of council, each member of council fills in their preferences, then it goes to the nominating committee to make recommendations to council.
So there are already, so it's not really council's decision, there's a nominating committee that has a say in where members go, is that correct?
There's a nominating committee that does look at the recommendations, and if things aren't aligned into numbers, then they do recommend, yes.
And that nominating committee is different every year, correct?
It is. It's based on who is the mayor, acting mayor, and deputy mayor at the time.
Next question to the mover. Currently, we have three members on Green Acres. Why are you recommending two?
Simply for consistency. One of the other boards, the Lethbridge Housing Authority, only has one. So it was a matter of just simply balancing the expectations and the workload of council members throughout the various boards and committees.
Okay. And last question you have in here, July 31, coming back to governance. Governance, no SPCs meet in July or August. Are you looking for a June 30 deadline, or are you looking for the September deadline? Because July 31 would actually mean June 30.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually looking for, there will be a, a motion here coming up in a few moments that'll preclude that date altogether.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins.
Thank you, Counsel Carlson. Any further questions? Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel.
Thank you very much. And this, this to the mover. You don't include Arlac, Intramunicipal, Governance, or Economic Development Lethbridge on, on the list. And I'm just wondering if we should be looking at those as well. Right now, Arlac is certainly the mayor and deputy mayor. With the deputy mayor rotating every six months, I wonder if we shouldn't have that as an alternative council member that serves on there for three years and rotates out like this. I might suggest that as well for Economic Development Lethbridge. And then Intramunicipal is just, it's not included on this list either. So I wonder if there is a reason not to include those, or if you would entertain including those, or where your thoughts are with that?
No, I certainly would agree with, with including those.
All right, any further questions? Seeing none, to open debate, Counsel Midland Hope.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly, this, I want to make, and I want to do a public apology to members of this council. There have been some reports in news media in regards to comments attributed to me regarding this particular initiative, and I accept those comments fully, and I apologize to my colleagues. The intent was not to embarrass anyone, it was not to point fingers at anyone indicating that they might have taken money from an organization that they shouldn't have. That was not the intent of this. The intent of this is to really allow us to have a fulsome look at our boards, committees, and commissions, our time limits on them, to encourage members of council to sit on more than just one or two boards during their tenure, which would allow them a more rounded understanding for the various boards, committees, and commissions. The second piece in regards to funding, I am simply proposing that members of council forego additional compensation for having, or donating those funds to a charity of their choice as they has been, as has been done in the past. This is, I think this is an important step for us. However, I am also very cognizant of the fact that some of the comments that, that I have made in the newspaper have certainly challenged the integrity of some of our members of council. That was not my intention, and so for that, I apologize publicly.
For the word, Counsel Carlson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Higgins. Thank you, Counsel Middleton Hope, for bringing it forward. I think it was acting mayor, am I right? Acting mayor, thank you. Schmidt Rempel talked about different committees that may also be appropriate to look at. So I was going to make a referral motion. We've done it in past councils, where we look at all of our committees, our BCCs, our boards, commissions, committees, to see the relevancy, to see if there's anything better. I was wondering if you'd entertain a referral motion to governance, not just for us to review all our committees, but several of these that are highlighted here, Green Acres, Highway 3, Lethbridge Housing, et cetera, are not creatures of the city. They're actually creatures of the province, or the different ministries. And so us changing the way we do things may impact their legislation, may impact their way of doing business. I'd like to at least give them the opportunity to say what they would see as the best path forward, or if any relevant provincial legislation needs to be changed in order to accomplish this. So I was thinking of referring it, I think maybe Counsel Carlson started down that path, refer it to governance committee, invite the, these committees to come in, maybe the others that Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel discussed, so we could have a fulsome discussion. I know that Counsel Dodik had put in the delay to October 31, which is our organizational meeting, so I think we've got some time.
Certainly amenable to that, thank you.
Worship, I'd, I'd make a referral motion to Governance SPC, hopefully to meet that October 31 timeline, hopefully.
That is a friendly, I take it, amendment there? Oh, it's a referral, anyways, okay. Sorry, so we just vote on the referral, okay. Any further debate on that, or? Nope, all right. For referral motion, Steve, a vote?
There's a vote on it, but if we could add more clarity about what you want the committee to do, or is it referred to admin, or is it referred to governance, and what information are you looking for, please? Thanks.
Basically, it's to refer the entire resolution for discussion at governance, and I think governance could maybe, first step, have just an open, and I defer to the chair of governance. First step is have a quick discussion on which are the relevant committees to look at, and then spend some time talking with those committees to say, how do you, because we do that now. When we appoint public members to committees, we invite the chairs in to talk about the needs of the committees, the skill sets they're looking for. There may be relevant information that each of these committees can provide. They may say, we want no councillors. They talk too much, Counsel Carlson. Or, or they may say, we're a high-level governance committee, we prefer city councillors, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to get their input. So it's basically, first step would be governance to talk about how to review our committees, and then to actually reach out to those committees and say, what would you folks like to see? Does that, is that enough information? National City Clerk? Okay, thank you.
I want to craft that before, obviously, it's, or the referral, we've got that information enough to, to do a vote on, all right. Okay, call, we'll call the question on the referral, all in favor. All right, that's unanimous, thank you. All right, I have a resolution here from Counsel Carlson, Increase to the Deposit and Signature Requirements for City of Lethbridge Municipal Election Candidates, 8.1.2. Be resolved the city council change requirements to Bylaw 5803 Election Bylaw as follows. Number of eligible elector signatures for councillor and for mayor to 25 and 50 respectively, and deposit for councillor and for mayor of $100 and $100, and $250 respectively. And further, the city solicitor be directed to make the necessary amendments to the election Bylaw 5803. Questions, Deputy Mayor Parker?
Thank you very much, and I understand that this was a recommendation through the Chair of Governance Standing Policy Committee. Is this an opportunity to amend this as well? Because for the reason being is, I understand, there's one part I don't like was the deposit for $100 or $250 respectively. Would this be the time to have that removed or amended, or would that have to be sent back to governance?
This would be the time to do that.
Okay, so, I don't know, is this the time to ask for that part to be removed, or do you want to entertain questions right now, Matt?
I've got a couple more questions.
Why don't I entertain the questions, and then I will bring it on after.
Mine was just a point of clarification.
Counsel Carlson?
The recommendation from governance was that this be defeated, so.
Thank you, thank you very much for that clarity.
But it's coming forward, it's one of those, it still has to import to council, sit as committee members, and so of course, it comes through to council, same thing, but this was lost 3-1, I believe, at committee level? Okay. So I'll move to 1, okay. So I don't have any further questions. So Deputy Mayor Parker, did you have a change to this?
Actually, I, I like half of this resolution, so I'm going to throw it out there. I would like to have the deposit for councillor and mayor be removed, and, and actually have the number of eligible signature signatures, actually, I'd like to see that go from 50 to 100, and I can explain that in my debate as well. So I would rather, and I like the one go from 50 to 100 on the signatures, and then remove the deposit part of this resolution.
So 50 for councillor, 100 for, for mayor, and no dollars there, to have that removed? All right, any, any questions on, so how does that, how do we move forward with that?
It was defeated at committee. Anybody can put any resolution on the table now, so Counselor Parker has put that resolution.
Sponsored by Counsel Parker, okay.
For signatures, I guess, is what he's putting.
Right, okay. Okay, any, any questions on the change? Again, 25 and 50 goes to 50 and 100, and the deposits are removed. So Counselor Parker has brought that forward. Any further questions, Counsel Campbell?
Just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to let me know, what is the problem we're trying to solve with this? If I can ask.
And I believe it started, Councilor Middleton-Hope, did you?
It was Councilor Palladino.
Or Councilor Palladino, I'm sorry. You can speak to it, councillor Parker. Yeah, you're the sponsor of it now.
Well, I'm the sponsor of it. And so this was a recommendation that was brought forward by councillor Palladino. And then from at that time, it was brought at a council meeting, it was referred to governance. Governance had an opportunity to look at this, and they really couldn't come to a motion that they could support. So it was defeated. But for process, it was brought to here just to have some kind of closure on regards to, it started with Mr. Councillor Palladino, and it's going to end at the council level. So that's why it's here at this point.
But, just, the question is, why is this, I mean, what was it, the problem? Was it, I mean, other than, if you can explain that?
Councilor Palladino?
How is this going to make things better? That's all.
Well, during the 2021 election, the city had 33 candidates run for councillor, and six ran for the mayor's chair. Shortly after the election, there was some talk around the difficulty in hosting the forums and open houses with such large numbers. Some electors found it owners just viewing the candidates' videos, all the videos, and others complained about the unsightly numbers of lawn signs about the city. So that's what started it all.
And you're probably thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor Palladino, with the signatures to go out, if you could get 25, 50 signatures, that may, so you're going to put your name in there, you would hope that you would be able to garner that many signatures prior. Is that, would that be fair to say, councillor Palladino?
So the intent is to not have that many people running for office?
Right. And the argument against it was that they didn't want to discourage anybody. But yeah, it holds the applicant accountable.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Croson?
I'm in for debate, if we're in debate.
Okay, not debate yet. Councilor Middleton-Hope, questions?
Also in for debate.
For debate. And debate. All right. To open debate, councillor Parker.
Well, thank you very much. And I want to thank councillor Palladino for bringing this forward here. First and foremost, I don't believe the financial aspect should be part of any, I don't think democracy should be justified by having someone put a deposit at the municipal level. I think... Okay. And so for that reason, for that was one of the main reasons, I didn't feel someone should feel, be disenfranchised because they couldn't come up with the amount of funds, even though it may be 50 to 100, it's still, there's still a barrier in regards to finances to be, have an opportunity to run for elected position in a municipal election in the city of Lethbridge. I think it's, before, it was only five signatures that a person had to get. And I think it's not much of an onus asking someone to get at least 50 signatures to have your name brought forward. And of course, if someone can't get 50 names, or 50 people to support them, then they shouldn't be running for city council. And that's my, in regards to councillor Palladino talking about signs and all that, I think an idea regarding signage could be, no sign should be allowed on public property in general. And that could be something that could be brought on and talked about later on in regards to visual pollution on public, right away in public property. But that's a discussion and debate for another day. So I thought this would be a good kind of middle ground in that people have an opportunity to run, and go out there and get 50 signatures, and you have all the right to run. And if 100 people run, so be it. If 200 people run, so be it. But at least you have to get at least 50 signatures. And I think that's a pretty simple ask of people running for the civic election.
Councilor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. I greatly appreciate what councillor Palladino and now councillor Parker are trying to do. But I think there are some things we need to realize. First, nobody checks the names. You could make them up. Unless somebody actually wants to go in and take it to court, they're not checked by the city clerk. And if you came in with under the 50, they still have to accept your nomination form. You can also simply go to a bar and get 50 people you don't know to sign these forms. So I don't think it's a deterrent that people think it will be. And so I think it doesn't really matter how many signatures we have, because it's not going to do what people think it's going to do in the end. So whether we vote for this yes or no, it may seem like a deterrent to some people, and it might turn them away. So I will be voting no against it. But I don't think it's going to achieve at all what anybody's hoping it will achieve.
Point of information, I just want to make sure, there was a comment regards, and if I may, Mr. Chair, in regards to those names aren't checked or nothing, maybe I can direct the questions to the clerk. When people challenge the nominee's signatures on that sheet, that's the reason why, and maybe you can help me out there.
I'm going to have the Assistant Returning Officer, David, come up. But in the meantime, as he's coming up, I will say we do count them, for sure we count them. And they can get challenged at the provincial level, but I'll let David explain. Thank you.
So thanks for the really good question. Under the Local Authorities Act, it specifies certain things which a nominee has to provide. It includes a name, an address, a certain number of signatures, and an affidavit that is signed saying that they meet the criteria to run for election. However, there is very limited criteria in which the returning officer, or the person accepting the nomination papers, can decline to accept the nomination paper. In fact, the last election, there was a case in city of Edmonton in which the affidavit refused to be signed by the nominee, and the returning officer was inclined, actually said no, but it went to court, and the ruling was that they had to accept that nomination paper even though the affidavit wasn't signed. That part of the legislation has since been fixed, but still the criteria is very limited. So when a nominee comes in and brings their papers, we will go through with them, encourage them to get the number of signatures and all that sort of thing. But the fact that there is sufficient or insufficient number of nominees is not a reason to decline the nomination. We do give them space to get more than the required number of signatures and encourage them to do that. The only reason being is because a member of the public can come and challenge to see that nomination paper and then take it to court. But it is not the returning officer that is part of their duties as listed in the Local Authorities Election Act.
Right. On that, councillor Croson. Oh, sorry, you just wrapped up there. Councilor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you, and I appreciate councillor Palladino bringing this forward. In response to councillor Campbell's comment, I would submit that it is consistent with other cities, and they have done research on what type of election process is utilized in other cities, whether there are signatures required, whether there is funding required. And I think this proposal, prior to the amendment, is consistent with many of the other cities in the province. I think it encourages serious candidates to come forward, do the legwork before they put their name in the hat. And I think that's important, particularly as councillor Palladino indicated, when we go back to events where we have candidates' forums, I imagine, and I know you've been a part of it, councillor, yeah, Carlson, there we go. Too many Cs. Where we, yeah, exactly. I know. I can't see that far. Where we have 20 or 30 or more candidates, it becomes very, very cumbersome and arduous, not only for those that present the debate, but also for those participants and the public, to be able to make heads or tails of who is presenting and on what topics. I think it also offsets some of the costs of the city clerk's office. And at committee, we asked the city clerk if this incurs more cost than it actually compensates for. And I think the response was that it does provide some remuneration to offset some of the costs, because this is intensive work for the city clerk's office. And lastly, I think it does also reduce signage. And so I would ask members of council to consider some of those in their decision. Thank you.
Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins, and thank you, councillor Parker, for resurrecting this, because I was hoping this would just fail on its own. And I do understand the thoughts and ideas behind it. I was, at committee, I kept hoping that members of the public would show up, or that we'd hear some good reasons to increase the dollar figure as well as the signatures. Because when we did refer it to committee, I was on the fence. I understand the intent, but I think it was councillor Dodik who during debate in committee, and pardon me if I'm speaking out of turn, councillor, talked about, if anything we do dissuades one person from running, that's reason enough not to move it forward. Because people do run for different reasons. Some run fully knowing that they probably aren't going to be successful, but they've got some ideas to bring forward, some discussions to be had. I think we should be focused on encouraging people to become more involved in our democratic process than trying to dissuade them. And if 50 signatures, I look around this table, not hard for any of us, I'm sure. You know, give us 10 minutes and we can get those. But if it does dissuade someone who's got a passion or an interest, say a brand-new member of our community, who has just come here, we've had some run, who have just moved here for university, who have just moved to our community from elsewhere, and they may not have the same social circles, or the same timelines that we all share. So if this discourages one credible candidate from running, then I won't be in support of it. As I said, for us, that's pretty easy. 50 or 100, give us, give me 20 minutes. But other people may not have that kind of luxury or privilege or access. So I won't be supporting this, but I do appreciate the thought behind it. I do hope that either we can, as a motion arising from this, or at some future date, try to limit those lawn signs, which are basically plastered all over public property. I'd rather see them in private. So that's something I'd rather go after than dissuading someone for running. So I won't be supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Councilor Dodik?
Yes, thank you. Although the resolution was a bit different to Governance SPC, I did vote against it. I was one of the three that was against it. To me, any barrier to democracy causes me concern. And as councillor Carlson, I can't read it over there, as councillor Carlson commented, if a credible candidate might be dissuaded because of this, that's reason enough. And as councillor Campbell talked about, what is the problem this is trying to solve? And I don't see that this is a problem. So I will not be supporting this resolution.
Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for bringing this motion forward and making the change on that, because I did certainly see the deposit as a potential barrier to running for council. I just want to bring the attention, or bring attention to a couple of things here in the city of Lethbridge. The University of Lethbridge requires 10 signatures to run for Students Union. Lethbridge College requires 15 signatures for running for the Students Association. We require five to run for Lethbridge City Council. Whether we're putting our names forward for election, or even running to bring attention to an issue or have some ideas that we want discussed, both of those should warrant 50 or 100 signatures. And I don't believe that getting those signatures would be a barrier to anyone who is passionate about running for council, or passionate about an issue or an idea that they want to share with this community. Getting more than five signatures, and this addresses what problem we're trying to solve, getting more than five signatures is a way of creating public engagement in the voting process. And lack of public engagement is something that many of us at this table have had concerns about over the past year, over many years. I would also say that if you're collecting names at a bar, you're probably going to engage with those people, and they are most certainly likely to engage with you, because I know when I was running for council, they were all coming up to me at bars, asking me questions, as well as other places, because I go other places than just the bar. I walk around Henderson Lake, people talk to me there, too. You know, I get out. We know that. If we're not interested in engaging with more than five people to sign our paperwork, then how can we expect voters to come out to vote for an election? And if we as candidates aren't interested in engaging with no more than five people to sign our paperwork, how do residents trust us to engage with them on other issues? I will be supporting this. I do think it's something that we need to put in place.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, I didn't, I've been back and forth on this one. I'm a fence city, because I've heard some of the debate, and I do see the merit of not having barriers. But I also, as was mentioned by Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel, it's, you know, if you get around and you can get these signatures, that if you can, you can't find 25 or 50, I don't believe that's a barrier. The dollar figure, sure enough. However, many communities, as a matter of fact, a majority of communities, do require a financial deposit. But I do understand that could, that could be the barrier. The signatures, I don't feel it is. So with this change, I will be supporting this. Back to councillor Carlson, or councillor Parker?
I'll be Mark Campbell today. Let's not forget, it is a deposit, and you do get it back if you hit certain criteria. So it's not lost money.
That's been removed. So first of all, who's the mover of this resolution?
You are.
So did you want to speak?
Oh, he asked me to.
Well, I don't know who you were pointing at.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a Parker.
Thank you very much. And I think, I think this resolution is a resolution of compromise. And I think Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel made a very, very good point. You know, you have to do your work, you have to go out there and do your due diligence, and you have to do a bit of work to run for this position. And to go get signatures, it does not disqualify because if you have no funds or nothing like that. But you should be able to get pen to paper from 50 supporters in your community. And in a general election, you're going to need at least 5,000 or more people to vote for you. And I think there's an expectation, and you owe it to the community, that you should be able to go out there and get 50 people to go through, not so much a screening process, but you should get 50 people to support you, so at least you can be part of the process. And I don't think it's much to ask. And I hope as many people run, and I hope they get lots of signatures. So 50, I think, is a compromise. A lot of people say a lot more signatures are needed, but I think 50 is a small step, so I'd ask for council support.
Right. With that, a question has been called, and we will do it by roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Councilor Carlson?
Opposed.
Councilor Croson? Councilor Dodik?
Opposed.
Councilor Middleton-Hope?
In favor.
Councilor Palladino?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Parker?
In favor.
And Mayor Higgins?
In favor.
And councillor Campbell?
Opposed.
Carried five to four.
All right. Move on to the next resolution here, moved by councillor Campbell. Funding allocation request, outreach programs, Streets Alive Mission, 8.1.3. Be resolved that, in addition, be resolved that in addition to the previously approved 2023 to 2026 operating budget, C11.2, Lethbridge Outreach Programs, City Council adopt the following recommendations of the Community Wellbeing and Safety Strategy, CWSS Advisory Committee, with regard to the funding for the Reaching Home Funding Portfolio. Number one, approve up to $215,460 per year of Reaching Home federal funding for the years 2023, 2024, 2025, and 2026. Two, Streets Alive Mission to operate outreach programming, and further be resolved that the city manager and city clerk be authorized to sign the appropriate fee-for-service funding agreement pending availability, available funding from the Government of Canada. So I'm open for questions. And I see, no, oh, councillor Campbell?
I guess this would probably go to, Andrew Malcolm, Mr. Malcolm, if I could just, just to, just to clarify what it is that we're doing here, and sort of how we got to the point we're at right now. So this is, this is, we have two pockets of funding, and we are, right now, we are trying to approve the Government of Canada funding, is that correct? And we'll start with that.
Thanks for the question, councillor Campbell. So back in November, when the operating budget of city council was approved, there was an operating budget initiative to provide outreach services. While that identified the municipal portion of the funding, that was packaged and presented with the intent of leveraging federal Reaching Home dollars to supplement the municipal dollars. We then followed that pathway forward to bring forward, to go through the procurement process. And in alignment with previous council resolutions, you are the body who has to approve the Reaching Home dollars, and that is what is before you today.
Now, there's been questions from the public that's saying that the procurement process right now was not necessarily given enough time to get to who ultimately this was awarded to. Can you address that?
I can say that the procurement process met the minimum standards. We put it out for an appropriate amount of time. Now, understanding that did land over the holiday time. However, when we... However, when we look at our delivery date of an outreach program being targeted for the spring of 2023, working our way backwards, that was the time period that we had to complete the procurement in order to deliver the service. So again, working with the information that we had at the time, and the delivery date of having outreach available for the spring of 2023, we worked backwards, and that was when that timing landed.
And final question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, should this funding not be approved here today, what will happen?
I don't know fully. I think maybe I'll look to our city treasurer to speak to the municipal portion of the funding. Without the reaching home funding, we certainly can't deliver the project as it was originally scoped. So I will have to lean on the treasurer to speak about the municipal portion. Through the mayor to Counselor Campbell, in regards to it, and I was busy reading something, so maybe if I don't get it quite right, please ask me the question again. When it comes to municipal funding, that is within council's, I mean, obviously, council approves that and had that funding in place as of last November, specifically for outreach services. So council could make a decision on how to utilize those funds, if that's what your question's on.
If we don't approve, so we are approving, I'm sorry, just better make sure I'm getting this right, we are right now, today, we're approving what the Government of Canada, what we've already approved, the funding that is allotted to Streets Alive, correct? That's what we have here today.
So through to mayor, to Counselor Campbell. So with, when we're talking about the funding here today, we're specifically, what council is approving, is actually the federal component of the funding. So council previously approved in November in the operating budget for '23 and '26 is actually the municipal portion of that funding. So those two components together are what's required for the contract, for the outreach contract in the year. So you'd have to add both municipal and the allocation that's here before you today for 2023 to get to the full allocation for the contract.
Thank you. And I wanted to just confirm what I'd heard earlier. If the federal dollars are not approved today, it's my understanding that the funding would not support the work that is needing to be done, so we would, council would need to come forward, and this would have to be re-scoped? Is that correct to say, Mr. Malcolm?
Without the reaching home dollars, the procurement process that was put out and the scope that was asked will not be able to be met with the budget that we have available. So we would have to then go back to the drawing board and figure out what our next steps are, and I'm not sure if we can fully put that into words right now, because we do have to go back and take some time to look at what our options are.
And that would come back to council, then? Is that correct?
Going to again lean on the city treasurer here, because if, depends if reaching home dollars are involved, as I understand it. If reaching home dollars are involved, because of a passed resolution to council, council would be required for that decision. If it's specific to the municipal portion, I believe your direction has already been provided through the operating budget, but I'll lean on the treasurer to speak to that. Through to Mayor Higgin. That is correct. What Mr. Malcolm is saying is that if we came back and we're using federal funding or recommending that, council as the body based on the me 2019 resolution, has to approve that allocation for the federal dollars. In regards to the municipal funding, that funding was provided under initiative by council for a specific use. So if that, once again, if that wasn't council's intent to use it on outreach services, then we'd need some sort of direction from council on where to use those funds for.
Thank you. And that would be my last question here, is I would like to, depending on how this comes out, if it does not pass, I would be letting you know I will be coming forward with a resolution on the municipal dollars. And if this does not pass, and I've hearing what you have today, would you be moving forward prior to hearing the resolution come from council? Or would you wait to hear back from council? Because you do have, you have an approval in November, but if I'm saying, if this does not pass, I'm going to provide, you know, something else for municipal dollars, it hasn't been started already, because we're waiting for the approval today? Yes, Mr. City Manager?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Staff just need to have a quick chat here.
The contract is already in place, so we would be looking for council direction on the municipal part as well.
Oh, you would need direction on that anyways. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Crowson?
I'm in for debate, but if we're still in questions, I can wait.
Sorry, I just advanced and I kicked somebody out. Was that your, oh, you kicked yourself, okay.
I'll ask the question if I can, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, through you to City Manager Designate. As was discussed in C11.2, there were two streams of outreach that those dollars were supposed to fund. Are we spending it all on one stream, or is this contract, would it complete both of those outreach teams? There was one that's called the Mobile Outreach Team, the MOT, I think it's called, and then there was the Indigenous Outreach. OM, it's all in front of me, but I'm just trying to remember it.
Was it related?
Would this accomplish what 11.2 intended?
Correct. So this procurement process put out the request for all, the entirety of 11.2, which had identified two branches, an outreach mobile team and an indigenous outreach program. So that was what was put out through this process. Not to be confused that we have a separate agreement for the diversion outreach team, DOT, which is a totally separately funded program that is also completing outreach services in the community.
Okay, thank you. So this, approving this would satisfy the intent of 11.2?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. City Manager to you or your Designate, can someone outline for me how the services that Streets Alive are going to provide will meet the reaching home funding requirements?
The federal reaching home directives are intended to prevent and reduce homelessness in our community. And so the purpose of this outreach team is to connect with individuals in our community who are either experiencing or at risk of homelessness and get them connected to the system of care and connected to housing services.
And now, overwhelmingly, the services under reaching home have to offer a centralized intake and/or be indigenous projects. How is Streets Alive doing that? Do they do centralized intake out of their office?
We operate a decentralized coordinated access model, which is also outlined in the reaching home directives. And so all of our funded service providers that are engaging in this community are expected to operate as part of that model, which is referred to Integrated Coordinated Access.
All right. And how does Streets Alive achieve the indigenous component of the reaching home funding requirements?
There will be contractual expectations in terms of providing culturally appropriate services, as well as ensuring that there are indigenous staff members employed for these services.
How does this overlap with some of the current outreach services that are out there?
Mr. Malcolm spoke earlier about our diversion outreach team, and so the primary difference between the diversion outreach team and this ASK is that the DOT team is intended to divert emergency services such as EMS and police calls, and there's also a significant transportation component to the diversion outreach team. The primary scope of work with this outreach team is specifically to engage with those who are in community that are not requiring transportation or diversion of other services and are residing in encampments.
So how are they connecting them to the shelter?
They would support an individual in getting to the shelter by calling the diversion outreach team if transportation was needed, but they're also, they're more intended to be doing that referral and intake process than the transportation itself.
I'll jump out unless anybody else has any, or let somebody else have an opportunity to ask questions.
Counselor Crowson? Oh, you're in for debate still, correct, Counselor Crowson? Yes, okay. Continue on, Counselor, Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
So just sort of going back to what Counselor Carlson had talked about, we've got the two dedicated outreach team channels, and I'm looking specifically at C11.2, the CMHA-operated outreach mobile team and the indigenous outreach program with an operator to be determined. So a portion of this is already being given to CMHA for the outreach mobile team, or is this an additional third team?
This would be additional. So the diversion outreach team run by CMHA is funded through a different initiative entirely. This, what's in front of you today, would be to combine the outreach mobile team and the indigenous outreach program that were identified in the operating budget structure under Streets Alive.
Because C11.2 specifically says CMHA, which is where my confusion is coming from, because it, C11.2 specifically, the paperwork I have says CMHA on it.
At the time that this initiative was submitted, the Canadian Mental Health Association was operating an OVAL outreach team, and they are no longer doing that.
Okay, so we don't have them in place to do that? So we'd be looking for another service provider for that outreach mobile team then as well?
That's correct, which is part of this ASK today.
So Streets Alive would be operating both teams?
We've combined it into one team. It was just two branches of one service, so yes.
So does that effectively get the support that we need out on the street when we combine into one team as opposed to two? Because there was, like, we specifically have the Indigenous Outreach Program in here, and I really don't want that to be lost. And it concerns me that we've combined this into one when there was a specific focus on indigenous outreach.
We believe that ensuring that that cultural competency across the board will have a greater impact on the indigenous lens, rather than having two separate teams working with individuals, as there may, there's no ability to control who they're engaging with in the community. So we can ensure through the contract process that that indigenous component is not lost.
Okay, and, but in the application from Streets Alive, they have not indicated an indigenous component?
Not specifically in the bid, no. In the bid document, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Middleton-Hope.
Thank you. So this question would be back to Mrs. Mottz. So if we're, if we're removing the mental health component from this, because the Mental Health Association of Canada is no longer a part of this particular initiative, then is the expectation that Streets Alive will provide that very specific and technical service?
We're not removing the mental health component of this from the aspect of the referral and intake process. So the expectations in terms of engaging with individuals, completing that intake process, getting them into the system of care, will not be different with different providers. That's an expectation that's across the board, which is outlined through our Integrated Coordinated Access System. We refer to these as tiers one to three, with tier three being a more complex referral and intake process than a tier one. So we would expect that this service provider is operating within that tier two to three level of complexity, regardless of the organization.
Was that part of the initial request, the RFQ, that they provide those, that level of service?
I'd have to refer back to the document to confirm that, but what I can confirm is that that's written in all of our service agreements, that expectation.
Okay. So are, you're suggesting, then, that Streets Alive is competent and capable of providing this component, for which they will be compensated if this is approved, and yet we're removing this one team? It seems to be a pretty important piece here. And I just want to make sure that we have an organization that is being asked to do something that they are capable of doing.
What I can confirm is that we will monitor that through contract expectations. There are quarterly reporting expectations, as well as submissions that they have to provide to us on a quarterly basis. So if we are seeing that the service provider cannot hit those outcomes that we've identified in their agreement, we can address that through the contractual process.
Handing out sandwiches and bottles of water and referring people to services is one thing, but making the kinds of assessments and providing the level of service from a mental health perspective seems to require an enhanced level of serviceability. Would you not agree?
I would agree. And again, that assessment ability is outlined in our Integrated Coordinated Access System. We use the SPADA assessments, and so all tier three navigators are required to have that in our community, regardless of whether they work for the Canadian Mental Health Association or not. We have other service providers that are expected to also complete those assessments by a qualified trainer.
Thank you.
I see no further questions, so I will open up for debate, and this will start with Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. This, of course, has arisen from a significant rise in encampments in our community over the past summer and underscores the urgency for comprehensive housing supports in Lethbridge, including these outreach services. And we need to be clear that what happened with the overnight shelters and its difference to the, what is being proposed here with the outreach component of the ASK here is totally two different things. There was a dire situation. We asked, can we help people step forward? There was, it was, by all accounts, it just didn't work out for the overnight when we had minus 30-degree temperatures, and we all know about the situations that arose from that. This is about outreach. This is about helping people that need that help, and Streets Alive has been around for a long enough time in the city that have, despite what some people are saying about what happened with the overnight shelter situation, that they have experience in this field. And we also have in place right now the component of the contract expectation, whereas if this is not working, then that contract can be changed. So I think it's important that we, right now, because of the situation that's coming up very soon, encampments are coming again, I think we need to be proactive, and I ask my colleagues' support on this recommendation.
Counselor Crowson?
Thank you. I'll reach at the beginning of the housing continuum of care. The difficulty, of course, is that you have to have the entire continuum in. We need to have housing to move people along to. And right now, we don't have the appropriate housing. We don't have the permanent supportive housing, been promised, never seen it. We're not, we don't have any of that, or not much of that in place. So almost anyone doing outreach is going to be challenged. In fact, we're giving anyone doing outreach a Sisyphean challenge, because they're trying to move people along to something that doesn't yet exist. However, making outreach part of the continuum of care, knowing it's part of the continuum of care, it is about making the relationships, and it's about making sure that people are taken care of as much as possible until we get the other places. So building relationships can take a lot of time. It's not something easy to do. In my perfect world, I would actually take this money and put it to housing. I think everybody knows that's where my heart is. Let's actually get housing and actually stop this problem. But since that's not a solution, that's not an option, I think we have to look to get as much outreach as possible, because it is one of the first, it is the first step, and it's one of the important things to do. I will be supporting this. Like I said, it's going to be a Sisyphean challenge, no matter who does it, and if Streets Alive is willing to do it, you know, good for them, because this is not easy work. So I will be supporting this, but boy, do I wish we had housing in place to actually move this along.
Thank you, Counselor Crowson. Counselor Dotick?
Thank you. I will not be supporting this. Oftentimes, we get, we talk about grants and funding from other orders of governments, and it puts pressure on council. So you got federal money, you got provincial money, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't work out. The Bus Barns is a good example of grant that was received, and the operating costs are a killer for the city. The request for quotation, the response The request for a quotation, the response given was that it met the minimum standards required. And by the questions that were posed by members of council, it became very clear that there were more questions than there were answers. So we use buzzwords like outreach, and we're going to do all this and all that. And as I sit here and after I've read all of the material, I'm being asked to allocate monies to a project, which I really don't know whether there, i- is something that can be done based on the request for quotations. And, you know, i- it's one thing to say, yes, we're going to be able to monitor, we're going to have contracts, but th- these are pieces of paper. At, at, at the end of the day, I want to be satisfied that if we're going to be providing outreach services, that we in fact are providing those outreach services. And that is not a reflection on Streets Alive or anyone else. It's just that the material before me does not reach the level that's needed for me to be able to allocate monies, whether it be from the municipality, the federal, or the provincial coffers. So for those reasons, I cannot and will not, and I'm, and I'm able to support this resolution.
Counselor Dodik, Counselor Middleton Hope?
Um, thank you. I reflect on the comments that have been made, both for and against at this point. I comment from just a slightly different perspective. I need to see a strategic plan. I need to know that the decisions that we're making are the right decisions. We're being asked to spend a significant amount of money, and we're being told that we can look to downstream feedback in terms of whether this is the appropriate course of action that we're taking and whether or not it's being successful. Let's get this right. Let's not do this quick. And I know that there is a time crunch here. We've had nearly a year, nearly a year to debrief this, to research it, and to prepare our response for this spring. And council is now being put in a position where we look like the bad guys because we're not going to fund a program that quite candidly is not fulsome in its explanation of what it hopes to accomplish or how it proposes to do that. Let's not just throw money at this problem. Let's ensure that we have an adequate and effective response to this particular problem. In the end, we recognize that we need more resources. We need more people to, to be on the front lines to respond to this crisis in our community. But just simply taking an approach that has been presented to council, in my estimation thus far, is not there yet. I need to see more from our administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Middleton Hope. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. I will not be supporting this either, and I do this understanding that this means that the project will need to be re-scoped, and it's going to go back to RFQ, and we will be seeing it coming forward again. Given that there was no indigenous component addressed in the RFQ we received, and I, like Counselor Dodik, don't find that we as a council have been supplied enough information on what will actually be achieved or delivered. I'm also not at all comfortable with the combination of the two dedicated outreach team channels that we voted on during budget process. That's what we voted on during the budget process, and now that's been changed. I want to see those separate channels because I want to make sure that our most vulnerable populations are getting the services that they need and getting connected to the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the, the questions and the robust, robust discussion on this because I think it is a, a topic very important to our community, especially with the, the warm weather coming. We don't want to see similar incidences last year. I was on the fence on this one a bit, and I was really hoping the questions and discussion and debate would tip me one way or the other, and they have. Mostly the answer is about how our Canadian Social Development Group manages these contracts. They do their quarterly reviews. They do, um, do, um, I can't remember the phrase, performance monitoring and, and they can, uh, performance improvement monitoring, I believe it's called, and they can tweak the plan. Or the, the contract can always be ended or changed if it's not meeting the standards that are required. So at this point, I think it's, it's better to move forward and have something in place before the, the warm weather hits, that we can monitor, we can amend, or we can go down the road of issuing another RFQ, RFP, if it doesn't meet our needs. So I will be supporting this. I think I, I know which end I'm on in this one, the losing end perhaps. But I will be supporting this because I think we need something in place rather than absolutely nothing, because then we'll be scrambling to put something in place. So I, I will be supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. I will not belabor and carry on. I, I do like the comments and questions that came before me, but I will not be supporting this for many of the similar reasons that the others have already mentioned why they will not support. And so I won't continue anymore, but I will not support this at this time. And I'll go back to Counselor Campbell. Nobody else in the queue. Counselor Campbell to close.
Uh, I would just call for the vote.
Be that my roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Counselor Carlson?
Reluctantly in favor.
Counselor Dodik?
Opposed.
Counselor Middleton Hope?
Opposed.
Counselor Palladino?
I'm opposed.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Parker? Mayor Higgin?
Opposed.
Counselor Campbell?
Favor.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
That's three to six. That's a defeated motion. Thank you.
I was going to say a time to take a quick break, but I think we're almost near completion, so we won't do that. All right. Moving on, administrative presentations, nothing. City Council updates. Are there any city council updates? Seeing none, and we do not have a public hearing. And so beyond that. The motions for in-camera motions. So moved by Deputy Mayor Parker, closed meeting omnibus motion 14.1 and 14.4. Be resolved that city council directed the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussion with respect to CWSS funding allocation and intergovernmental matter remain confidential pursuant to section 21 harmful to intergovernmental relations and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Deputy Mayor Parker? Questions been called, all in favor? Opposed? So carries. And a resolution from Counselor Dodik, closed meeting ratifications to boards, commissions, and committees, 14.2. Be resolved that city council ratify the following organizational representative to serve on the following external board as outlined below for the following term effective immediately, Economic Development Lethbridge. Keith Summer, Lethbridge Senior Citizen Organization Board Member, Senior Sector Representative, Economic Development Lethbridge for a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2024. And two, ratify the following organizational representative to serve on the following committee as outlined below for the completion of the term effective immediately. Heart of the City Committee, Jackie Standing, Events and Partnerships Manager, Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce, Representative for the Lethbridge Chamber of Commerce, completion of two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024. Further be resolved that city council direct at the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussion with respect to the appointments to boards, commissions, and committees remain confidential pursuant to section 17 harmful to public body, harmful to personal privacy, and 19 confidential evaluations, 23 local public body conveniences, and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Dodik?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to start of the history of Lethbridge in the 1800s and then work my way...
Question has been called?
Yes, the question has been called.
Question's been called, all in favor? Opposed. Thank you. Resolution from Counselor Carlson, closed meeting HR matter 14.3. Be resolved that council direct at the closed meeting discussions with respect to the Human Resources Matter remain confidential pursuant to section 17 disclosure to personal privacy, 19 confidential evaluations, and 24 advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further be resolved that mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and execute the confidential contracts as per the recommended direction provided in the closed meeting. Counselor Carlson?
I'm tempted to refer this to Counselor Dodik so I can hear his history of Lethbridge, but I'll call the question.
Thank you. I think yours would be more positive on the history, but that's okay. Questions been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That's who carries. Thank you. With that, oh, yes.
Uh, with regard to the, uh, the funding allocation request item, did council, and I might have missed this from administration, did council want to maybe look at an alternate outreach plan for consideration for admin to come back?
It's my understanding, we were told that if this does not pass, that you'll be coming back to council anyways. Is that not correct? That's what Mr. Malcolm had mentioned? That it would not work, so we would have to re-scope or we would have to come back to council?
So, um, Deputy Mayor Higgin, so I believe that is what was said by Mr. Malcolm. However, definitely one thing, well, this, we do need some direction on the municipal funding portion of it because that is still in place for outreach services at this time. So we will venture to say that I'm, I'm looking over at Ms. Clinton to actually see if, what she would like to add any other comments.
If we were able to get some council direction, as Ms. Hilford spoke about on coming back with specific outreach plans, that would address the municipal portion as well as a plan moving forward, which is the strategy that Counselor Middleton Hope spoke of as well.
Okay. As I mentioned before, I would be comfortable in coming back in two weeks with a, a motion with some direction. Resolution. All right. I know it's kind of a notice of motion, in verbal notice of motion, but I will have something in two weeks to go over. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.